Good evening. Welcome to the regular council meeting of March twentieth, first day of spring. And then would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Quick, call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Fluharty?
There.
Smith?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Smith, second by Asbury? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Annual presentations. Old business ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-three.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with best equipment company for the purchase of a Enviro- EnviroSite Rover X Basic System with an integrated lift and declaring an emergency.
Hey, can I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Asbury. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, in short, the purchase of a mainline sewer camera. Currently, we do not have a piece of equipment like this. We either contract out with a subcontractor or a private contractor to televise these mainline sewers, or we contract with Coward County. This will allow our crews the ability to perform that work, identify problems at a much quicker basis, and obviously save some dollars as well. This piece of equipment has a ten to fifteen-year life expectancy. It's not something we'll utilize every day, but it will last, and it will most likely be outdated before we wear it out.
Any questions seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Ordinance number twenty dash twenty-three.
Approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and one four seven three five Holdings, Inc., doing business as Cleveland Tank and Supply, located at fifteen Hemisphere Way, consisting of five point eight acres of permanent parcel number eight one four dash zero seven dash zero zero one, and authorizing execution of that agreement and declaring an emergency.
It's our wish to put that on second reading. I have a motion for such by Smith, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-three.
A similar ordinance approving another community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and captive land holdings, too, doing business as Lake Shore Electric Corporation, located at five Hemisphere Way, consisting of seven point four six acres of the same parcel, permanent parcel number eight one four zero seven dash zero zero one, and authorizing execution of that agreement and declaring an emergency.
Again, it's our wish to put that on second reading. Motion for such by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to touch on something that has been in the media quite a bit over the last few months, and something that we've, some steps that we've been taking in regards to the uptick in auto thefts. There had been a rash throughout many northeast Ohio communities, as well as neighboring counties. New car dealerships, used car dealerships, as well as just residents automobiles. We have been actively patrolling throughout the evening hours, as well as daytime hours, weekends, Auto Mile, Broadway, Rockside. We have actually deterred a couple of incidents. Our officers have been doing a tremendous job communicating with their colleagues in other cities as well, who are facing some of the same challenges. I also want to mention that the recent installation of the flat cameras are also helping provide a deterrent, but there's also the items that all of us need to just keep in mind as well in making sure that we're locking our vehicles in the evenings, as well as I want to give kind of a quick shout-out to Sarah Lloyd in our police department. Sarah took the initiative of contacting Kia USA and Honda Corporation, and we did receive a hundred and sixty wheel locks at no cost, and those are being made available to Bedford residents. If you go on our website, or the police department, or City of Bedford's social media pages, there's details on how you can stop up here and get one of those for free if you own one of those vehicles, and those are Kia and Hyundai specific vehicles. So shout-out to Sarah for taking that initiative, and just wanted to let everyone know that we are actively patrolling and making sure that, you know, we limit, we always say one theft is too many here, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're letting those know that we're out and not to do that in our town. Want to mention our new building commissioner will be starting next Monday, on the twenty-seventh, so we'll be making introductions over the coming weeks. Mr. Michael Greer is joining us from Fairview Park, and he'll do a tremendous job. Also want to touch on just a friendly reminder and let individuals know, we are sending out grass notices, friendly reminder notices, and what we do is we utilize our water department billing to determine, it's our best way of identifying specifically those vacant houses, empty houses that may be owned by a bank. Those properties with zero to minimal water usage will receive a letter. Now, I understand that we do have individuals that live in homes by themselves, we do have some seniors that use very little water that may receive that letter, you're not in trouble, you're probably already taking care of your property, but this is the best way that we've seen works to try to get those notices out ahead of time. So those will be going out in the next thirty days as grass will start growing. And I also want to mention and give credit again to police department, specifically our night shift, working on some of those quality of life issues, our parking violations, the evening parking, on-street parking, parking on the lawns. We are on pace to more than double the amount of parking citations that we've issued in previous year. I think we're over three hundred and twenty, three hundred and forty that have been issued so far. Obviously, you know, we wish we didn't have to do that, but those that are concerned about those are, our officers are out there, we are issuing citations, and rest assured that we'll continue to do so and try to remediate that. End of report.
Thank you. Law Director.
Thank you, no report tonight.
Thank you. Got them planned, Director.
I have no report tonight either, thank you.
Okay. Before we get into the council reports, I just want to make a statement that in our work session, we took an informal poll on whether we want to pursue changing our animal ordinance, and with a five to two vote, we decided we do not want to change that ordinance. So we will not be allowing chickens in the city of Bedford at this point. Who's first?
Asbury.
Mr. Asbury, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, chicken people. Happy first day, Asbury. Mike, chipper service will be starting pretty soon, April?
Next month.
Next month, April. So get your sticks and twigs and limbs all tidied up and ready for us. This has been a really bad year, I think I've seen more limbs and tree branches down than I've ever seen before. So get those ready, we'll get them all cleaned up starting in April. Also in April, April seventeenth to the twenty-first, April twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth, at the service department, a computer roundup and hazardous waste disposal. More information will come at the next meeting, but get your things ready for that, you can go onto the, where do I see that, city's webpage, and get more information on what is acceptable. Mike, I haven't been down there this weekend, was there any change in the spectrum lines on Mapledale?
No, I do not believe those were removed yet, and we'll reach out to them as well. I know and I shared that it wasn't First Energies, and they have a, they're unable to touch spectrum lines, even though they're on their own pulse, but we'll, I'll double-check again in the morning, and if they are, we'll follow up again.
Thank you. Also like to mention the Easter egg hunt Saturday, April first, that's put on by the Parks and Rec Department, Bearcat Stadium, Bedford residents twelve and under, gates open at nine forty-five, and the hunt starts at ten AM sharp. Also, let me pull up this picture real quick. The twenty-second and the twenty-third, which is Wednesday and Thursday of this week, the Parks and Recreation Department are having individuals down giving free tax assistance. For those individuals that qualify, you must be a Bedford resident, earn less than sixty thousand dollars per year, no rental income, and no business, no business loss filings or paid employee. Again, Wednesday, March twenty-second, from ten to three, Thursday, March twenty-third, from four to seven PM. Contact the Parks and Rec Department for an appointment, four four zero seven three five six five seven oh. I believe that should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yeah, just have a couple of quick questions for City Manager Mike. Have we heard from ODOT about the Northfield Grove Bridge construction yet? Because originally, they were scheduling it for March, and March is waning away pretty quickly.
Yeah, I don't have a start date yet, but I believe it's probably going to be latter part of May. But once we get something specific, I'll let you know. We have not had a pre-con with them. Our last communication was we authorized them to utilize the access road through the cemetery. In return, they will be repaving that roadway at no cost to the city.
Okay, and the second question, have we set a date yet when we're going to start the water line replacement on Ennis and Harriman?
No, we reached out to Fabrizi, and we requested a pre-con for that, and at that point, we'll hopefully give them the notice to proceed. They have all the materials, all of that was acquired throughout the winter, so as soon as I get that meeting, I will provide an update for you.
Okay, because they're going to be using a temporary water line through those areas when they're doing it, so.
Correct, yeah, it's one of the reasons why we didn't start sooner, that bypass with the freezing weather, it wouldn't work. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll start. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spinks?
Yeah, happy first day of spring. You could tell it was the day before yesterday when we had the snow, and Saturday when it was so cold, but I want to say big thank you to everybody that helped out. We had the Bedford Historical Society reverse raffle this weekend, just thank you to everybody that donated and showed up and helped. I did not, I forgot to mention someone that was a big help, which was Don Saunders' son, Matthew, related him. Thank you, Matthew, for doing all the hefty, heavy lifting work.
It was my son Andrew, not Matthew.
Andrew, I mean Andrew, that's the other, Andrew, sorry. Andrew, I was thinking of both.
Yeah.
So thank you for Andrew, he got those heavy sideboards up while his dad watched him and supervised, but thank you to your son for doing that. I forgot as the night went on, I was kind of tired, but this is very, very successful. Our next, next big event that's coming up will be, in May, will be our membership dinner, and that's Thursday, May fourth, and that will be in Oakwood, at their rec center. Our rec center did shine, we had people that were from all over the place, and either the council people from Oakwood were talking about how nice our center was, they hadn't been in it in a while, and that looked relaxing, it was, we had a hundred and twenty people, it's a little tight, but we had still plenty of room for everybody to get around, and it was, it was a very good event, and again, thank you to everybody that helped out with that, with the much-needed fundraiser that we needed this year. Cresswell, finally Dominion is done with the gas line replacements, they're not done with the cleanup and all that. Mike, do we have kind of a timeline?
The restoration work will probably take place later this spring, when the weather's officially broke, for them to do the planting and any other repairs that have to be made.
The sidewalks look excellent, the residents are really happy about that, because they kind of got lucky, some of the really, really bad ones is where they had to dig, there was only one left that was really in bad disrepair that they didn't get, because they didn't need to dig there, but it took them a little while, but residents are happy with the outcome, and they were very polite to all the residents and stuff, about letting them know, tagging when they were going to be doing, you know, digging up their yard and replacing it, so they were happy with that. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty?
I have no report tonight either.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Just like to say good evening, also like to give Sarah a shout-out, as far as taking upon herself to get the anti, not really anti-theft devices, but clubs as they were known, but thanks for doing that, but I also need to mention that only Kias and Hyundai's that are key start are eligible for those clubs. The push-button starts aren't affected by the rash of thefts, so once again, just remember, if you do have a key start, you will not be able to acquire a club only key start vehicles. End of report.
Thank you. Let's just get on with business here then. Ordinance number twenty-three twenty-three.
Amending ordinance number ten thousand thirty-three twenty-two, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year twenty twenty-three and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Jen?
Yes. So this is the first budget amendment of the year, amending the ordinance that was passed in December of last year. This appropriation ordinance includes mainly reappropriation of brands and projects. In general, in the general fund, there were some movements of funds within the departments, from the building department, engineering department, tax department, that cannot make those movements of monies without council approval, as well as we have an increase in liability insurance that we need to budget for of thirty thousand, and a seventy thousand increase for IT services and a firewall that's needed for city home. And the community development fund, we need to reappropriate the funds for the CDSG funds we received, or replace the poolhouse roof for just under forty thousand. In the SEAL fund, we're appropriating carryover funds from the SEAL Drug LEF and burn grants in an amount of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars increase for the grants received, the SEAL received for the ARPA grant. In the grants fund, various grants and donations for the police and fire department running up to sixty thousand dollars is being reappropriated, as well as the recreation department received two new grants this year, one for just under sixty thousand and another one for fifteen thousand, we're appropriating for those, and also the Milpet grant for the funds received last year and this year. Sorry, this is long, there's a lot of changes here. In Fund two fourteen, this is the fire medic fund, there's an increase for the safer grant, this grant is paying for two additional fire paramedics for our city for the next three years. In two seventeen fund, the ARPA fund, we're increasing for the poolhouse renovation, that's five hundred thousand, and six hundred and forty thousand for the Broadway Avenue Roadway Improvement Project. In the capital projects fund, two hundred and sixty-five thousand are already approved for the poolhouse renovation, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand increase in the Broadway, for the Broadway Avenue Roadway Improvement, and ninety thousand for the purchase of the eight ninety Broadway that was just approved last meeting. In the water fund, we recently approved a Lincoln Water Line Project Engineering for seventy-eight thousand five hundred, we're bringing for that, and then the wastewater fund, increasing the ninety thousand dollar budget for the purchase that was just approved of the Rover Basic System as the mainline camera. And then finally, in the SEAL Unforfeited Fund, appropriating one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand for the years of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three unforfeited funds. I'm hoping that's, I have another amendment for a little bit, I'm trying to pare down the number of amendments if possible.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three.
She called me.
Oh, Smith, sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You don't have your formal tie on, do you? Okay. You two vote?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four twenty-three.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Trojan Technologies for improvements to the ultraviolet disinfection system at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Asbury.
Thank you, Mayor. The ultraviolet disinfection, disinfection system is approximately eleven years old. This includes lamps, rows of lamps in this unit. The last time, about three years ago, we did replace one of the banks of lamps, and we are now looking to replace an additional bank of lamps. Trojan Technologies is the sole source provider of the OEM parts for this piece of machinery, and this was a budgeted item for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Authorizing a contract with Sintas Corporation for the rental and cleaning costs for facility service supplies for multiple city buildings, including mats and garments for the service department and wastewater personnel and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Smith, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Sintas number that did come in, Sintas is a Amnia participating public agency, their contract is two 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 eight eight six, which allows the city to lock in at this price, which was bid through another agency. Basically, the breakdown is, the majority of this is for uniforms, for various union personnel, as Law Director identified, Service Department, Wastewater, Water, Cemetery, Parks and Recreation. That is out of the fifty-one thousand, roughly fifty-one thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight is of that.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-three.
Twenty-six, amending ordinance number ninety-nine sixty-one dash twenty-two to provide for continuing membership in the Ohio Municipal League Joint Self-Insurance Pool, providing for payment thereof and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Asbury, second by, excuse me, Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, the city has been a member of the OML JSI pool since nineteen ninety-three. They have been in operation since the late eighties. There's a large pool of municipalities that put in, and obviously, in order to get reduced costs. We did budget, we are, we're last on a three-year cycle, a contract was three years annually, it was roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This insurance covers facilities, equipment, staff, a wide range of items. Obviously, there were cost increases, which is the new quote that came in. A lot of that was based on disasters that had happened, flooding incidents, and obviously, replacement costs have gone up. Our costs did go up approximately thirty thousand dollars each year for the next three years, but what, what that is primarily linked to is it has taken, the pool has identified all of our facilities, municipal, county courts, wastewater service, Ellwood, all of that, and they previously had a value, a replacement value on it at approximately fifty million dollars. After reevaluating that, they increased that by approximately ten, actually, it was just under eleven million dollars, and that is where that increased cost is associated with. And that is where that increased cost is associated with. They have been great partners of the city, as we've been with them, like I said, since the early 90s. I can speak for the last 10 years, they've been outstanding, even during some of the challenges, where they have stood by us in court and worked with us. So we recommend continuing this relationship for the next three years.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 27-23. Amending ordinance number 986221, authorizing the purchase of one Concorde Northeastern MPS 1055CS heavy-duty chassis mounted multipurpose granular material spreader and a heavy-duty municipal power angling snowplow through the State of Ohio Term Schedule Contract Number 800860, index number ST515, and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fleury. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment, this, as Law Director mentioned, is amending an ordinance from 2021 where we were council authorized a purchase of all of the equipment, chassis, plow, everything for a new salt truck. We obviously, the fact that we're amending this, we have still not received that. We were recently contacted by the company that received the state bid and they provided us with updated costs. And now we will be receiving, excuse me, the 2023 instead of the 2021. What that means is the old total was $66,941 and 11 cents. And there was a new quote that is provided. We're going to be getting into the next ordinance as well, so I'm kind of just going to explain it. If we chose to only pursue one of these salt trucks, which the next ordinance talks about, the 2022 that we ordered and still haven't received, if we backed out on one of those, the increase to a single truck chassis and equipment would go from $66,000 upwards to $90,000, almost a $24,000 increase. By agreeing to continue to move forward, and we are next in line to get these things outfitted, by agreeing to amend this ordinance along with the next ordinance, which reflects our purchase of the chassis, plow, spreader, all of that for the next truck of 2022, we would see a total increase for both of those be $34,807.75. We did just receive the actual vehicle for this piece, it's a 2021, we, or I'm sorry, a 2023. We expect the next one to be here later this year, which would also be a 2023, although we were told that if it wasn't available, they would provide a 2024. These are the state numbers, they have gone up, there has been delays due to supply chain. These were budgeted for minus the increase that both of these ordinances combined would would equate to.
A question, if we have to get a 24 versus 23, would they honor this contract?
They told us they would honor that contract because we'd be receiving it this year.
So we'd let the increase from.
Yes, we would, we would be receiving this, that piece this year. Good question. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 28-23. Amending ordinance number 996322, authorizing the purchase of one Concorde Northeastern MPS 1055CS heavy-duty chassis mounted multipurpose granular material spreader and a heavy-duty municipal power angling snowplow through the State of Ohio Term Schedule Contract Number, a different contract number 800925, index number STS515, and declaring an emergency. Sounds like an auctioneer.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Smith? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fleury. Seeing what you just talked about.
Correct.
The second truck.
Correct. This was the ordinance that City Council originally approved in 2022.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fleury?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And now we come to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comments.
I haven't done that in a while.
I received a text from an ex-resident asking about new business in Bedford. Beware the lavish lounge.
Yes, not, not, I am aware that that is not happening.
Yeah, I won't get into the details of that, but that's, no.
Actually, I believe the owner of the building, who I did speak to, he was in the process of evicting them. I think what you're referencing, a photo that was out there, that that is not taking place.
Okay.
Yeah. I can assure you that.
Thank you.
Bob Ederich, Juan Teresa, and Sam LaCirca, we've got some questions. The pickup for limbs, do you want us to hang, my understanding is we have to put them literally vertical of the sidewalk so they can pull and pick them up?
Yeah, you put the cut end, the big end toward that curb.
Okay.
Because that's how they load them into the machine.
Okay. And if I have long ones, which I do have some long ones, do I need to cut them up based on the length, even though they're within diameter? Some of them might be 20 feet long and is it okay if I pull them over there, it'll be crossing the sidewalk? That's my concern.
Yeah, or if you can lay a long ways on the.
Yeah, you can still lay a long.
Tree line.
On the tree line.
Okay. And another question there, for 2021, for tax documentation, if we need to do a tax return for 2021, does that have to go to RITA on that? And if so, can I just mail my W2s to them?
For 21, the one that was.
21.
That was due in April of this, of 22. That one, you can submit here to our office. 22 and newer, go to, I sent to RITA.
Yeah, yeah, that was one in which mine was kind of cut in half. So actually, I spoke with them about it and luckily they broke it up so that it was even, but I didn't fill it out because it was too confusing. Okay, so I can send the W2s to Bedford and to RITA and you guys can fight it out?
Send the 21 to Bedford and the 22 to RITA.
Okay. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I have a motion for adjournment by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please. Wait for the machine to catch up.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.